Good evening and welcome to the March 25th, 2019 meeting of Livermore City Council. Let the record show that all members of the council are present with the exception of Mayor Marchand, who is excused. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, was there any reportable action out of our closed session?
Vice Mayor Carley, no, there was not.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have the pleasure of getting our annual update from the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, Vice Chairperson Madeline Love doll. Are you prepared?
I would like to thank the council for listening today and the staff. All right, so I'm the vice chair. My name is Madeline Love Doll. I'll be serving, this is my second term this year. I hope to serve a third term and fourth term next year, two years. We are the Livermore Area Youth Advisory Commission, also known as LIAC. We work to represent the youth and to represent the perspective of the diversity of Livermore. So, next slide, please. For our duties and responsibilities, we aim to bring together youth and adult, private and public sectors of the community, and we would like to address the opinions and responsibilities of all of them. We promote youth involvement within the Livermore community, and we also promote awareness and interaction between city leadership and the young people within the city. And we also, our meetings create a forum for ideas and the concerns and provides a vehicle for the youth interests to be communicated to the city council by LIAC. Next slide, please. As you can see, we have our staff liaisons, and we, right, this year, we have a full 15 youth members as part of our commission. Our meetings, we meet monthly for the first Monday at 7:00 PM every month. Next slide, please. The biggest project that we have is the World Cultural Fair that we had this last year, or 2018. What we did was, we developed an event to promote the different regions and education within Livermore youth. And so, we divided all of our commission members to each work on a region, and within that region, we have performances from musical, or theater, or dance groups, or traditional music, and we each had an informational booth along with cultural items for each booth that each member of our commission staffed and explained to the public. We had over 250 people of the public that attended, so that was a pretty big, cool thing, as well as Trish Monroe attended and the mayor. So, big thanks to them for supporting us. And then, next slide. And I just wanted to thank you guys for your time. Thank you for listening to me. It's been a pleasure to be on LIAC. Do I have any questions or comments?
Any questions from the council?
I just wanted to say how much I enjoyed the World Cultural Fair. It was a whole lot of fun. Thank you for doing it. I'm really hoping it becomes an annual event, and keep on keeping up.
I'll definitely make sure to bring that to the council at our next meeting. Anything else?
Councilmember Warner?
I just wanted to thank you for what you and your group does. It's very valuable, and it's always great to have, you know, all the generations involved. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much. Very well done. So, we're going to turn to Citizens Forum. I remind people that this is an opportunity for the public to speak on items that are not before the city council this evening. So, tonight, I have five cards, Nancy Bankhead, Jim Schmidt, and Greg Scott. Ms. Bankhead?
Can Jim go first?
I guess. Does Jim really want to go first?
Sure.
Okay, Mr. Schmidt.
Good evening, honorable councilpeople. I'm Jim Schmidt, representing the president of Livermore Valley Opera. I want to talk a bit about how the city has supported the arts groups over the years, particularly with regards to space needed for operations. First of all, let's go back to the friendly barn down the street. I'm going to let Nancy Bankhead speak more of that, but I do have a colorful story that they were told at one point, "No, you can't be in a barn. There's no running water." And some of you remember Arnold Kirkwood, Kirkwood, he somehow produced an excavator of some kind in the middle of the night, and by morning, there was water. So, that was the spirit of then, in partnership with the city. Then, probably the real first site was at the rodeo grounds. Livermore built a large building quite a few years ago, maybe during the relocation of Civic Center, or maybe after. Anyway, they donated space to the arts for as long as we needed, is what I heard the letter said, but somebody can't find the letter anymore. But anyway, they were eventually, those groups were asked, as the city, as the building got smaller, the groups were asked to leave. Then, where did they go? Space was available at the old library for a while, and then, when the library closed to the groups, it went to Nob Hill, where the opera is currently sharing leaky, unheated space, but we're willing to share it. Then, just switching to the opera for a minute, John Shirley made a deal with Nob Hill, giving us space going back 12 or 13 years, free in those days. About eight years later, we were asked to leave. They thought they could rent it or sell it without us there, but that never worked. But we left and went to Growth Brothers in a leaky site for a year or two. We became known as the Vagabond Opera. Then, we went to Dave Bedford's tool shed, tool building, for a year. Then, we went to the west end of Chestnut, back where the city is developing housing. We were there for several years, paying rent this time. And then, we moved to East Chestnut, which is, all these moves are kind of painful. You rent a truck, and you've got to load all the stuff. Then, East Chestnut, we had to leave that. Back to Nob Hill, I tried hard to get to Nob Hill and sort of struck out, and John Marchand stepped up and helped get me the space, but this time, we paid rent. So, we're there now, but any day, we could get a letter. We're on a month-to-month basis, so we're just at the mercy of a place for storage. So, I'm going to leave it at that now. We're hoping to work with the city for an appropriate spot in which we would pay the bill. We're not asking for a free building. We're asking for a space. So, I will turn that over to the next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Nancy Bankhead, Greg Scott, Evan Branning. Ms. Bankhead?
Hi, I'm Nancy Bankhead, and I'm a rockhound. I've been a lithophile since I was a teenager, which unfortunately, was a long time ago. The lithophiles have been around since the 50s, and my mother, Evelyn Bankhead, was one of the starters of Livermore Cultural Arts Council. The Livermore Cultural Arts Council took on the responsibility of refurbishing the barn so it could be used, I believe it's a city building, but leased to LARPD, who this last January, January, is kicking us out of our building, which means that the lithophiles will die. It's a nonprofit. We are arts. So, it's been around. Yep. And the A Crew is who was there, Jim Doggett, Arnie Kirkwood, my mother, a bunch of the lithophiles were there, and 75% of those people are dead. And unfortunately, LARPD does not remember the history of the barn. It was a grassroots thing that saved it. I was one of the people that was going to chain myself to the barn when they threatened to tear down the barn, when they realized that that is part of Livermore history, and that's what Livermore's good at, remembering their history. So, we are looking for a space, and Opera has volunteered to let us go in there and help with, or be in with their building. If they can get some help from the city of Livermore, it would be fantastic. LARPD doesn't want us there because they want to put weddings, and they want a room for the bride to dress in. Grinding rocks and brides don't go together. So, that's my little thing on that. Another thing, I would like to read this from Chris Carter, put on my other hat for the Bankhead, stating that "We, the Bankheads, do not own the Bankhead Theater. It is owned by the people of Livermore," basically. And Chris said that "The fundraising has been strong this year and proved pretty far ahead of budget. We're very grateful to all the members of the community who are supporting us." The season announcement event is coming up in May, so you do not get into the announcement to find out what's coming next year to the Bankhead unless you become a member, and you can become a member for $100 or so, and that gives you 10% off on tickets, too, which is a really cool thing. Also, we are going to have the gala again this year, and Matthew Morrison is starring, he starred in the TV show, The Glee. So, get your tickets for that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bankhead. Greg Scott, Evan Branning, and John Stein.
I am Greg Scott. I speak on homelessness in Livermore. I have three minutes to speak about the desperation and hopelessness of the homeless. The overall problem here is the lack of political will to deal with the magnitude and scope of homelessness. What is being construed here is the expenditure of money with results on homelessness. I attended the homeless workshop on Thursday, March 14th, where three presenters presented their nouns, paraded their nouns. The first presenter was CityServe, paraded their first noun. They presented was "work in progress." It's a work in progress, all right. If Livermore wants to know about homelessness, the easy thing is to do a data dump of the coordinated entry file that the coordinated entry service provider, Abode Services, has. So, you don't even need the names. You just need the data of when they signed up for coordinated entry, and how long have they been out there. That's a measure of performance of how we're doing on homelessness. I contend that it's rather ineffective. Another thing is that, let's be transparent here. I hear that City Serve has received a grant, a large grant. I don't know if that's true, but let's announce how much that grant is for tonight in these chambers. How much is the grant for? You announced the other grants, the Human Services Commission out here for $1,166,530 here, and this is plain, you know, there's eight categories, and one category is administration. Out of that, just over $100,000 is for administration. That's larger than four of the other categories combined. It's larger than five of the categories in there for administration. Wow. The other noun that City Serve presented was continuum. It's a continuum, all right. Then, you had contractor block by block give a presentation on cleanup and surveillance. My question is, where's the loo in downtown Livermore at 3:30 in the morning? You're entertaining a contractor, but you can't figure out the enigma of the loo downtown? I don't quite get that. And then, you had another presenter that presented the safe parking homeless shuffle in Union City, sans RVs and motorhomes. If you don't have RVs and motorhomes in your safe parking, then you really don't understand the invisible homeless, the homeless that are not in the point-in-time count. So, we just don't seem to get it. There doesn't seem to be the vision here to solve the homelessness problem, though you're spending loads of money.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Evan Branning, John Stein, Clark Streeter. Mr. Branning?
Good evening, council, staff. Thank you very much for having me. Today, I come before you after a tragic event that happened recently. There was a shooting in Christchurch, New Zealand, that many of you, I assume, have heard of, and unfortunately, this event is not an isolated event. We've seen too often crimes of hate and bigotry and intolerance. Many of them have led ultimately to the deaths of innocent people. As a city, I understand that you do not have any purview over, you know, what's happening in New Zealand. However, I do think that we have seen, in this chamber, in opinion pieces, in, you know, speakers coming before you, we've seen mentions of hateful things. We've seen people speak in hurtful ways. The city has always been an inclusive, caring, and compassionate place. I feel that the city has been incredibly welcoming of a very diverse group of people, and what I ask for you today is, if it is possible for the city to bring up a resolution condemning hate and violence, bringing up support for diversity, bringing up a plan to help include a more diverse population and more diverse inclusion on things such as the commissions in the city and beyond. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Branning. John Stein, Clark Streeter, and Lanning Thompson.
John Stein, 1334 Cathy Court. I'd like to speak on development code and form-based zoning. First, a little bit of history. Form-based zoning originated in Celebration, Florida. It was basically created by Disney to create a town, a master-planned town, that looked like a town that was, you know, built in the 1910s or 20s. It worked, at least for almost 20 years. It is a master-planned community. It's not really a town. It's a subdivision of 4,000 houses, a main street, and it seemed to hold up for a while, but lately, they're having problems with crime, poor maintenance, the theater closed. Most of the shops in the main street have been replaced by offices. It's hard to, you know, force a community to have a certain culture or mindset, but it's been done in other places, and the Urban Land Institute has been promoting it throughout the country. In Livermore, it was adopted a few years ago, and there seemed to be, you know, some weaknesses. I think the city manager pointed out that the goal is to make everything look pretty much the same and not have anything that's, you know, way out of design guidelines. The problem really seems to be that the design guidelines, peaked roofs, porches, certain design features, were designed to be sort of a minimum, a floor, if you will. Yet, what seems to have happened is, it's become the ceiling. I mean, all of the developers come in and see that they can get approval by right if they meet certain standards. And what we've gotten is, for high-density houses that are bigger than the lots in floor area, rather than some more innovative designs, cohousing, submerged parking, or parking structures surrounding individual homes, very little green space. The code reduced the green space requirements, private green space, from 300 to 100 square feet per unit, and lack of diversity in either housing type or floor plans even for a given project. I mean, the prime example is probably Brighton, where you have about 150 houses, every one of which has the same shape, except maybe for the roof pitch and a few details. And the details don't match the form of the house. I mean, you have tall, narrow homes that are basically, you know, cubic in form, with design details like craftsmen or farmhouse, rather than maybe brownstone, or Edwardian, or even Victorian. So, I think it might be time to reexamine the form-based zoning and come up with some sort of a hybrid that more accurately fits the history and the culture of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stein. Clark Streeter and Lanning Thompson.
This is kind of a follow-on to Jim Schmidt's presentation. My name is Clark Streeter. I live at 457 Tyler Avenue. I am a past president of the Livermore Cultural Arts Council, past president of the encore players. I'm currently a board member of the Livermore Amador Symphony. I'm secretary of the Alliance for the Visual Arts, actually, I'm treasurer for the Alliance for the Visual Arts, and I'm currently president of the Livermore Art Association. And I just want to say that storage is a chronic problem for the arts groups in Livermore. I've been kicked out of a lot of the same places that Jim has, so we're shared that experience. The project that Jim's talking about will likely provide some additional space for some of the smaller arts groups in Livermore, and that's my pitch. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Streeter.
Good evening, council and staff. I'm Lanning Thompson. I'm an officer of the boards of both Interfaith Housing and Tri-Valley Haven. However, I'm not representing either board here tonight, though I am informed from my involvement with both organizations. I would like to share some thoughts I have about addressing the homelessness situation in Livermore. I believe we should look at the increasing numbers of homeless as if they were refugees or victims of a natural disaster. Each homeless individual has his or her own story and varying needs, but all of them had to leave their previous shelter arrangements for one reason or another. A lot has to do with the housing crisis in our area. One way cities respond to an influx of refugees is to construct a tent city or some other temporary housing, often in conjunction with the Red Cross or FEMA. I think Livermore should consider doing that on some public land. As Greg Scott has suggested in letters to the Independent, "This commons should have community bathrooms and be supervised and well-regulated, and have services that address the root causes of each individual's lack of shelter." Housing first may sound like a good idea, but there is no way housing can happen fast enough to address this growing problem. Ideally, I think such a facility would also have a day drop-in shelter, where people could get mail, use a phone, either chill out or warm up, depending on the weather, and receive services, counseling, and referrals. Tri-Valley Haven, which has been operating the only family homeless shelter in the area for decades, has been wanting to open such a day center for many years, but has not been able to acquire land to do so. Maybe Tri-Valley Haven could open this day center in a portable structure that could be located adjacent to the commons. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson.
Hello, Carl Wintey. I live just outside of the town of Livermore, but Livermore is one of the best places in the world, and I just want to express my thanks to all of you for serving this place, serving the cause of good government, city staff all the way through. It's fun to be part of a culture of a community that continues to want to do the right thing, take care of people and the like. So, I'm sorry to not be here to pledge allegiance to the flag. That's literally one of my favorite parts of the meetings as we get here, struggling to be there, to be part of that, to the republic for which it stands, the republic of elected officials that serve the greater good of a community. You can't please all the people all the time, but we continue to do a good job of listening, of accepting that feedback, and fundamentally, running an efficient government. It's the name of the game. That's not an inconsequential number of millions of dollars that are channeling through, but to continue to do a good job to serve the people and to serve the community. I'm supposed to address the council, not anybody behind me, but Mr. Greg Scott, thank you for continuing to push the cause of taking care of those most destitute in our community and our society. Mahatma Gandhi said, you know, "You judge a society by how well you take care of the most destitute." And so, may we continue to put good money to good causes, to be able to give blankets, give sandwiches, fundamental things, as opposed to having to have a resolution here to put $500,000 that was unspent forward until the next year, right? Continuing to do those good things. So, again, just my appreciation to all of you for serving the community itself. I thank you much. For those that put on a bulletproof vest to go to work, I salute you. Thank you for what you do. To all the city staff that I know are here behind me, I thank you all for what you do, and all you all at that table, namaste.
Thank you, Mr. Wintey, and that closes Citizens Forum. Thank you all for your comments. Now, on to the consent calendar. These are items that are considered routine and are acted upon in one vote. Are there any items on the consent calendar that any of my colleagues would like to pull? I do have two cards for 4.06 and 4.08, so can I get a motion to approve 4.01 through 5, 4.07, and then 4.9 through 4.12?
So moved. And can I make a comment, which is how nice it is to see the end of the emergency resolution?
I'm sure the city manager is also just as thankful. Do I have a second?
Second.
So, it was moved by Commissioner Monroe, Councilmember Monroe, and seconded by Bob, one of the other Bobs, right. Mr. Coomer? Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passed unanimously. 4.06, we have Ms. Connie Cops, and also 4.08. Would you care to speak to both of those at the same time?
Sure. And I want to speak to 410. There wasn't a card in there on 410?
No. No.
Oh.
We already passed it.
I thought I gave a card to that. Anyhow, when it comes to destruction of records on 410, that was confusing.
You need to speak to 4.06 and 4.08.
You want that in the row? What about 410?
That's already been passed, ma'am.
Okay. Well, I'll try to get it in a little bit here about the records.
No, we need to speak to 4.06 and 4.08.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
On 4.06, sir, we're dealing with North Livermore, sir. And in North Livermore, we've ignored a lot of, there's been a lot that's been brought up, a lot of questions in North Livermore that have brought up, a lot of records that were destroyed.
Ma'am, we're talking about the?
4.06, yes, sir.
Okay, we're talking about the Sunflower Court and the wall.
Track 8277, right.
Okay.
And on Sunflower Court, we, I, track 8277 and the public improvements include the waterline easement. Who accepted the real property? Who was, who gave it? Who accepted it on 4.06?
Finish your comments.
I'm asking you, who accepted it?
We need to hear your comments first before we can respond.
Those, okay, that is my question. My comment is, I spoke at this issue when this was brought up, and I asked our council and our staff to look at North Livermore as a whole.
This evening, we're talking about?
So, I'm asking you on 4.06, sir.
Yes.
If you could tell me, track 8277, where are its boundaries? Do you know that, sir?
Mr. Spence, can you answer that question?
I don't have information on the total boundaries of that. We'd have to bring that back to council. The tract has been in place for 20, 30 years, and we're talking about improvements to this specific?
Looks like the city engineer knows.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry. I was thinking of a different area. So, 8277 is bounded by?
Is that Central?
Central and North Front, with a new street, Barney Common, running through the center. This is a new tract. It's on page 56 and 57 of your staff report.
And that was dedicated, who dedicated the actual public improvements? Like, who owned that subdivision? Was it the city?
So?
You need to finish your comments.
I'm done. I'm asking you, you know, I brought this up when it was, when this was approved.
So, you want the answer to that question?
Well, what I'm saying is, North Livermore needs to be looked at as a whole. It's getting, like, dumped on without concern for public comment. And Central Avenue is off of West Area, and it's in that area, and I'm asking you to look? and I'm asking you to look at these closer, this area closer, when making decisions that affect that area. There's been, there's been articles in the Independent on that land and ownership of the park, and there's been a lot of concern over the years, and there were, in 2007 and 2008, this was brought up at meetings, and it wasn't addressed with honesty. The green space was not addressed with any kind of honesty, and that's wrong. People really want to be part of what happens to their neighborhood, and they're getting left out.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Cops. Did you want to speak on 4.08?
Yes, on item 4.08, I thought it was, on that, you've got all these different landscape maintenance districts, and there should have been a map on there. No one knows what LL4 is or LL6, and it takes a lot to look that up. And I think it's just time that, you know, when you're talking about these landscape maintenance districts, that they're overlaid with a map. I really liked what Trish had said at the last meeting about overlays, kind of like that anatomy that was really clever of you. People need to know where their boundaries are, what they can do, what they can't do, what they can bring to you, what they aren't supposed to bring to you. And some people need to get a little bit less ignored around here. It's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. Bringing it back to the council, any other comments on 4.06 or 4.08? Can I get a motion to approve?
Oh, so moved.
Councilmember Coomer made the motion with Councilmember Warner second. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Matter passes. So we'll move on to 5.01, and we have city staff to make a presentation. Mr. Greenwood and Mr. Cotto.
Okay, good evening, Vice Mayor and council. David Dakota, your airport manager, here for the city of Livermore. Tonight, for agenda item 5.01, staff presentation on a resolution to adopt changes to airport rules and regulations and to remove self-fueling from minimum standards. So a little history, the airport, prior to 2015, conducted fuel concessions solely by the city. In 2015, we transitioned to a new model of fueling, which was fueling through an FBO or a fixed base operator. We entered into an agreement, and they started fueling in 2015, which is Five Rivers Aviation. At that time, and the current standards for minimum standards are 45,000-gallon tank storage requirement for fuel for both FBO, which is your fixed base operator, and self-fueling. So for a little clarification, self-fueling is fueling of your own aircraft that are under your sole custody and control, so not for commercial purposes. In 2018, airport staff received a request from one of our tenants, Attitude Aviation, to conduct self-fueling. They made a complaint that the tank requirement, the 45,000 gallons, was too high and not within industry standard. And as a result, they also asked for what would be considered co-op fueling, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a later slide. At that time, we decided to hire a consultant, Aviation Management Consulting Group. Bob Trimborn's here from the Aviation Management Consulting Group, for any questions, to conduct a survey and develop a white paper on the self-fueling requirements that we have. The findings that they reported on from the white paper was that our tank capacity was indeed high in comparison to other airports and industry standards. So their recommendation was to decrease our tank capacity to 10,000 gallons. I'd like to point out, too, that the initial request that we received was for a 12,000, to reduce it to 12,000, so we're actually going to be reducing it a little bit further to put us in line with industry standards. In addition to that, there's a tank, or excuse me, a fuel truck equipment requirement that is standard at most airports, and 1,500 gallon for jet fuel, and 750 for avgas, as well as training and insurance requirements. They also recommended no co-op fueling, which, like I said, I will discuss here in a moment. And then also to move the requirements for self-fueling from minimum standards to rules and regulations, as it is not a commercial operation, it should reside actually in rules and regulations. Co-op fueling, so what co-op fueling is, is basically a group of individuals who would be jointly owning and operating one fuel source. Co-op fueling is not self-fueling as defined by the FAA, and airports are not required by the FAA to allow self-fueling, or excuse me, co-op fueling. And right now, we do not have any requirements that allow co-op fueling. And some of the reasoning for the recommendation to not conduct, to allow co-op fueling, is a couple different items. Number one is there would be severe impacts to our fixed base operator whom we have a long-term agreement with. And then the other item is it'd be extremely difficult for airport staff to manage a co-op fueling operation, as aircraft could come and go outside of business hours, all hours of the day, and it'd just be really difficult to monitor that and enforce. Some of the other proposed revisions, again, moving those self-fueling requirements from minimum standards to rules and regulations. We also had a piece in there that talked about underground storage tanks. We want to remove that. That's no longer industry practice due to environmental concerns, and our FBO has conformed to above-ground storage, and we wanted to solidify that. So there is a provision in there for above-ground storage, as well as updating our current restrictions, adjusting it to conform to the current standards. So we actually already have it in most of our documents. It's just the minimum standards hadn't been updated in so many years that we just want to update that to meet our current standard. This item was taken to our airport commission in December of 2018 and was supported unanimously. So the staff and commission recommendations is to introduce, by First Rating and Ordinance, to amend the Livermore Municipal Code, 11.08, rules and regulations to allow self-fueling, and to adopt a resolution revising the minimum standards for commercial aeronautical activities. And that concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Do we have any comments from, okay, any other discussion then? Do I hear a motion then to support the city staff recommendations?
I'll also move.
Councilmember Warner moves to approve the staff recommendation, seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on to 5.02. I know, you're making it easy for me. Yeah, I agree. Mr. Steve Riley and Tricia Ponto. Please, go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So this is the 2018 Housing Element Annual Progress Support. The annual progress report is a tool for tracking progress towards meeting goals and objectives in the city's housing element, which is one of nine mandated elements of general plans in California. The purpose of the housing element is to help local governments adequately plan for existing and projected housing needs in the city. The annual progress report is due to the state on April 1st, and filing it on time keeps us eligible for various housing grant programs. In previous years, the reporting requirements for the annual progress reports essentially included the number of building permits issued by income level and our progress implementing housing programs that are included in the housing element. Due to new state legislation that was recently passed, there are now a lot of additional reporting requirements for this year's APR and future APRs. So the state now requires that we report information regarding all the housing applications the city receives, how many of those units we approve or don't approve, how many units receive some form of readiness, which can be a certificate of occupancy or a final building permit, whether any projects invoke the SB 35 streamlining process, whether any housing units were developed as part of a commercial development bonus, and if the city rezoned any sites to accommodate its RENA targets. So RENA is the Regional Housing Need Allocation. It's a framework for quantifying housing need by income and is based on the state's projection of population growth for each region. And the city of Livermore's share of the Bay Area's need between 2015 and 2022 is just above 2,700 units. The city is not required to construct this housing, but it is required to show that there's adequate land zone within the city to accommodate this amount of development. The RENA numbers are divided into income categories based on percentage of the area's median household income, so they're broken down into extremely low, very low, low, moderate, and above-moderate income categories. You'll notice that we don't have a specific requirement for extremely low income, the extremely low income category, but all of the units that are constructed under that category are technically included under the very low number. So the annual progress report tracks the number of building permits issued for housing units in each of these income categories, including market rate and affordable units. In 2018, the city issued building permits for a total of 305 units, about three-quarters of which are considered affordable only to the above-moderate income household, and that's based on either actual or anticipated sales or rental prices for those units. Staff anticipates issuing around 300 to 400 residential permits annually over the next several years due to construction of approved projects. And at this rate, the city is on track to meet the overall RENA target number of about 2,700 units, but the housing is heavily skewed towards the above-moderate end of the affordability spectrum, and we're having difficulty meeting our lower-income category units. So to address the community's needs for more affordable housing options at the lower-income levels, this city allows and encourages accessory dwelling units, implements an inclusionary ordinance, and leverages local housing trust funds to increase the stock of affordable housing. So in 2018, we issued 18 accessory dwelling unit permits, which qualify as moderate-income units based on the rental prices that those units are going for. We issued permits for 18 deed-restricted units that were dedicated to low and moderate-income households. That's made possible by the inclusionary ordinance. And then we issued permits for 34 affordable rental units that are dedicated to low and moderate-income households. So now I'm just going to highlight some of the housing projects that are either under construction or in the development pipeline throughout the city. So the first is the Chestnut Square Senior Project, which is currently under construction. This development includes 72 units. One is a manager's unit, and the other 71 are affordable rental units that are available to seniors age 62 or older who qualifies low, very low, or extremely low income. This development also includes five units set aside for people currently experiencing homelessness, and there will be onsite services for these residents. Next is the Agino Apartments, which is also under construction. This is part of the Brisa Neighborhood Plan and includes 171 rental units, 34 of which will be dedicated for low-income families or individuals. And this project includes a lot of nice community amenities for these residents. The Aubin Grove Development just recently started construction a few months ago, and this project includes 100 townhomes, 15 of which will be dedicated for low and moderate-income households. The family building of the Chestnut Square Project is entitled and is anticipated to start construction sometime this summer. This project will contribute 42 units for low, very low, and extremely low-income households, including 10 units for households experiencing homelessness. And this project will provide support services for these residents and community space with programming for youth. Legacy Livermore is also anticipated to begin construction sometime this year. This project includes 222 market-rate rental units and approximately 14,000 square feet of retail space along First Street. The Vineyard Housing and Services Site is currently under review by staff. This project includes 24 units of permanent supportive housing and a supportive services center that will feature the new Open Heart Kitchen facilities. Last year, the council approved a concept plan for downtown, which included approximately 130 workforce housing units downtown at the corner of L. Street and Railroad Avenue. And another component of that plan was a land swap with the Stockman's Association, which enables the city to build Stockman's Park downtown and then up to 140 low, very low, and extremely low-income senior housing units on Pacific Avenue. So staff recommends that the city council offer an opportunity for public comment and adopt a resolution accepting the annual progress report for 2018. Following this meeting, staff will file a report with the California Department of Housing, Community Development, and the Governor's Office of Planning and Research. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the council?
Just to, I don't know if this is an easy one or not. Of all the things I see being built around town, I don't see anything where somebody like me, without an elevator in it, would be able to get to the second floor. Or, you know, are there any single-story units as part of our planning? If so, how many, where, which units? Because at some point, if I want to move, you know, I have to go to Tracy, like everybody else. And I just, it's disconcerting that when we consider only income level, that's, you know, probably what the state requires, but that, for those of us who, the second floor is just a backpacking trip, we, you know, it'd be nice to have single-story homes included in planning.
We certainly hear that, and we, we do have some projects. For example, the legacy project downtown will have elevators to all floors. Anytime you have a multi-unit project, like an apartment, the Agino project as well will be elevator access, but?
Yeah, the single-family homes is what I'm thinking about, you know, and that's the one that we seem to be missing on over the last several years. We just see so many of these three stories, very narrow, and it's like, yeah, you know.
And we do encourage developers to include single-story homes with detached, single-family homes. We just aren't seeing as many of that product.
Well, let them know when you talk to them, before they come to us, that I'm encouraging them to do so, too, and we'll question them if you don't see them.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions?
Do we have speaker cards?
Yes, we do.
I'll wait.
Okay. We do have three speaker cards, Andrew Barker, Connie Cops, and Greg Scott. Mr. Barker?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Andrew Barker. I think I've spoken at every housing element update in this cycle, so you've heard some of this before, but let me say mostly kind of the same things again. You're doing a little better than you have been in the previous years in terms of very low and low-income permitting, but you're still not doing well enough. I guess I should say, we're still not doing well enough. And when I bring this up, the standard response is that, you know, we sort of need more funding. We need more state subsidy, which, fair enough, I mean, we probably do. But we already use city funds to subsidize lots of things. And the one I want to point out, because it's the one I often complain about, is parking, right? We have plans to build two $20 million-ish parking garages, where each parking space will cost, on the neighborhood, of $40,000. All of that money is coming from taxpayers. It's all subsidized. The cars don't pay rent in those parking spaces. So this is very much below-market rate parking for cars that is subsidized by our taxpayer dollars. So I would encourage you to consider funding space for human beings, because they're more important than cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barker. Connie Cops, Greg Scott, Ms. Cops? Ms. Cops?
Connie Cops, 1422 Tulip Way. So, when I was reading this report, I saw deeper into it that there was a proposed project of 193 units on Lassen. Do you know what I'm talking about? I kind of have a little issue with that, because it's an area that's already pretty congested, and there appears to be open space across the street. But the Springtown Open Space consists of six acres of private common property that 505 people own, and then the golf course that was taken, like in Measure FF, you know, that golf course was changed into the trails. And I wonder if there's enough open space there on Lassen, because there's the hotel, the other hotel, there's the Mobile Home Park. Everything's pretty concentrated into one area, and I'm just wondering about the open space there. I know that, I know that probably things will change a little bit due to the fact that, you know, people are taking Uber. In the vicinity, there has been buses going through there for like 25 years with no one on them. So, I'm just wondering, you know, if some of our policies now will be antiquated due to Uber and Lyft and other ride-sharing, or maybe people will start riding the buses. But I am really concerned just about congestion, you know, and especially in North Livermore. And I sure didn't mean to seem disrespectful before I, my blood boils, because there's been a lot of misinformation, and there's subtle misinformation, and there's been meetings where there's actually been, you know, blatant, not true statements being, you know, kind of like taken by a lot of people as the truth, and I just really want this looked at. And sorry if I seem disrespectful to you, Mr. Carling, I didn't mean to. It was just, I am getting pretty upset, because I've been coming since 2004 to try to address this. And in 2004, I really was concerned about almost like cult-like activity that was happening in my homeowners' association and how people were trying to change our governing documents by trick-or-treating to renters and getting them to vote a certain way on our governing documents. And I didn't really know how to deal with it, because you're in a catch-22 sort of a trap sometimes with homeowners' associations, where things sort of happen that are really super hard to control. And it's been, it's been, it seems like our homeowners' association board meets more with city planners than it does with its homeowners, and we have to fix that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cops. Mr. Scott?
I am Greg Scott. As if your Housing Element is anything close to adequate, I counted 15 units up there for the homeless. To put that in perspective, the point-time count for the homeless in Livermore 2017 was 243, so you're talking around 7% on what you listed tonight. What supportive housing means at Vineyard 2.0, I've yet to figure that one out. Is it strictly for Livermore homeless? That question was asked in the workshop that I read about in the paper in The Independent, and the executive director of the housing authority that's going to run it gave the public relations technique of block and bridge, and it should have been a yes or no answer. But he later answered it by saying that some employees in Livermore live in Pleasanton. Yes, they do. They live in Pleasanton, they live in Tracy, they live in Modesto, they can live in Manteca or Escalon. Is it for, you know, what exactly is that supportive housing for in the $17 million of Vineyard 2.0? Thank you, Councilmember Coomer, for asking about disabled special needs. This is an interesting perspective, giving the grants from the Human Services Commission. This is over $1,100,000, $60-some thousand worth of grants. The Category 6, the disabled special needs, gets $10,600. That's less than 1%. That's less than 10% of the administrative fee. To put it into perspective there on the priority there, but don't worry, you're not the lowest category. The lowest category is career services. I mean, who would need a career for affording a place to live in Livermore? So, that's the lowest one. Wow. Okay. The vision, I like this one from, she's the Chief Executive Officer of ENGIE. It's a European energy company. It's one of the 50th, 50 largest companies in Europe, that I understand it. It's Isabelle, Isabella Kocher, and she says, "We have to decentralize, we have to digitize, and we have to decarbonize." Every commuter, you're going to build 5,000 to 7,000 more houses recently in the near future in Tracy. Every one of those commuters, the average commuter in California is putting over 14 tons of CO2 in the atmosphere. How long can we keep this up? Like, there's no damage to this? You know, California is putting over 450 million to 500 million tons of carbon dioxide into the atmosphere? Well, the carbon dioxide emitted today will be, 40% of it will be in the atmosphere in 100 years. Our time is rather limited on this, and we keep going with absurdity.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. That ends public comment. I'll bring it back to the council. More comments from my colleagues?
I had one question, and sort of clarify what some of the discussion that we had in the workshop. But if we look at the extremely low, very low, and low, and the rates versus what we have achieved in the past and what we would need to achieve to get the number in the time period, I think the rough calculation I did last time, it would have to increase by a factor of 5 to 10 at the rate. And one of the, and it was, Mr. Barker brought it up, but could you, again, just clarify, what are the real barriers in that area? It's not that, for lack of trying, say, but there are certain fundamental issues that we need to address in order to increase our rate in that area, and could you kind of let us know what those are?
So, very low, low, and even moderate units all require a public subsidy in order to be constructed. The market, the private marketplace is not creating units that are affordable in those categories. The city has a 15% inclusionary program, and we work hard to leverage additional funds from a variety of sources, but the funding that we have available is going to come nowhere close to meeting the demand that's identified in the RENA. And cities throughout the state have the same problem. We're not alone in this.
Is it, in addition to funding, is it also finding the place, or is that not an issue?
Sites are an issue as well. Certainly, in Livermore, we have an urban growth boundary, and so there are demands on available land, and so that is a constraint in addition.
Your adopted housing element, though, is required to and actually does show adequate sites during this period. So, while it will continue to be a challenge, and the city needs to look forward, especially outside this timeframe, the 2022 timeframe, we will need additional sites beyond the 2022 timeframe. But of the two sites, is the lesser of the two challenges in funding for a moderate or low-income, it's about $100,000 in subsidy per unit. For a very low or extremely low, that number, and then that's our local subsidy in addition to other sources, and for a very low or extremely low, that number climbs to north of $150,000 a unit, and you can do the quick math, that's many millions, and just for this very short period of time. And then that needs to be repeated, those many millions each year to keep up. So, while we actually produce essentially a lot of affordable housing compared to our neighbors, as you can see, it is far short of the demand.
I thought there was something else about, in addition to the funding, and is finding the partners that want to get into it as well.
And the other issue is simply the timing necessary to bring an affordable housing project to fruition, to cobble together all of those sources. So, it's finding a nonprofit partner to own and manage the property, and then it's usually a three-to-five-year process to bring a project from inception through completion.
Any other questions or comments?
Gosh, I guess this is still on. I, first of all, I want to commend you for the, for the report. I find myself very frustrated with the problems that we face as a region, as a city, with regard to housing, with regard to its impact on how people can afford, you know, where they can afford to live. Even when we look at the way RENA numbers are calculated, that varies from city to city based on income of the city. So, RENA, what moderate or extremely low income is, or moderate income is in Livermore is not the same as it is in old Menlo Park, just to pick a city at random. We have regional, we're part of a regional, regional area. The whole state, the whole Bay Area is working on solving these problems. I recognize the frustration of people in Livermore, Mr. Barker, Mr. Scott, other people who are of a genera, I could not afford my house, and I don't know many people my age who could, were we trying to buy them today? It's enormously frustrating. Thank you for the work that you've done. Hopefully, we can go forward, and we can make a little bit of progress. It's not, it's not enough, and that's just where we are.
I'm curious about the Chestnut Square. I know that there's been a couple of ads that are notices that applications are being accepted. Do we have a sense as to what the, the number of people that, it looks like Mr. Oranga knows the answer to my question? I'm just curious as to how well people are responding to notification that applications are being accepted.
The application period has ended as of Friday.
Oh, it did end?
Yes, and we received, I believe, 653 applications.
Wow, 653 for 72 units?
That's correct.
Wow. That speaks to Mr. Scott's point, doesn't it? Wow. Now, I assume that some fraction of those people probably aren't really qualified, but I don't know that. I mean, would that be a fair?
That is a fair assessment. It's just an application process, so the applications in there, they would still have to meet conditions. There's also a set of local preferences to ensure that Livermore residents get a first opportunity.
Yeah, but still, even if you eliminated half, you're still talking about several times more than what we have available.
Yes.
Wow. Well, it's a little bit sobering, isn't it? Thank you for that. Anything else from my colleagues?
This is just looking ahead and thinking about the building out and thinking about the urban growth boundary. We live in three dimensions. In California, we tend to think of the way we live in more or less two dimensions. I was at Planning Commissioner's meeting, because I wasn't Planning Commissioner before I was City Council, flying out of LA, and what really struck me was how very two-dimensional Los Angeles was. It hugged the ground, except for a very small place where the city center went right up. This is something we don't think about with great comfort in, anywhere in California, I think, but maybe we need to think about using all three dimensions that we live in.
Thank you. Anything else?
No, all moved to adopt the resolution accepting the Housing Element in 2018.
Moved by Councilmember Warner?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Monroe. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Measure passes. Thank you very much. Let's see, I'll do 6.01. That's the Legislative Platform. Is there a presentation?
Yes.
Ah, I see somebody getting ready. Ms. Martin?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and City Council members. I'm Christine Martin, your Deputy City Manager, and I'm here to give you the presentation on the 2019 State and Federal Legislative Platform that is available for council's approval this evening. The Legislative Platform provides a formalized, proactive approach to monitoring and addressing the hundreds of pieces of legislation that go through the system every year. The platform is based on Livermore's core values and principles, as well as city council goals. It provides direction and guidance, allowing staff to move quickly in support of or opposition to proposed legislation, especially in time-sensitive situations. The platform was first developed back in 2013, and it's been updated annually through a review of city needs and staff input, as well as an examination of the League of California Cities' priorities and strategies. The 2019 categories this year in the platform are city local control, fiscal stability, affordable housing and homelessness, planning and sustainability, infrastructure, job creation and economic development, libraries, public safety, science, technology and innovation, transportation and parking, and lastly, water. The city's platform remains mostly unchanged from last year, with a few new support positions related to job creation, science and technology and innovation, and economic development. It's also worth noting that for about a decade, the tri-valley cities of Livermore, Dublin, Pleasanton, San Ramon, and the town of Danville have joined together to collectively advocate on important regional issues like transportation and housing. And two years ago, the tri-valley cities also created a legislative framework to guide our collective advocacy efforts. This year, the tri-valley cities collaborated to add to that framework, adding a housing framework. Staff recommends incorporating this tri-valley cities' housing framework into Livermore's platform to enhance our voice at the state level and allow staff to respond quickly to the numerous housing bills that are moving through this year. On February 11th, council did receive a report and provided direction on that housing framework. While the tri-valley cities' framework provides areas of consensus for the five tri-valley partner cities, I did want to remind you that each city will continue to advocate for its own individual areas of concern as needed. And that concludes my presentation. Now, staff is recommending that you adopt two separate resolutions tonight, one for the city's legislative platform and one for the tri-valley cities' housing framework. And staff is available for any questions you have.
Any questions for staff? No, we have no speaker cards, right? Okay. I wanted to commend the staff that had worked on the plan with the other, the tri-valley cities' housing and policy framework. I thought that was a nice job in summarizing the concerns. We'll see if it has any impact on the state, but I think we all understand that. And I do think that the state, regardless what you think about the Senate, the Assembly, or the governor, I think we all are challenged with housing, and it's felt acutely, of course, in the Bay Area where all, where a lot of the tech industry is located, and it's a conundrum, I think, we're all facing. But I think that you folks did a nice job in pulling the five communities together and providing a summary of where our concerns are with regard to the CASA compact. So, anything else?
Yeah, I would just add, it's a great job on here, and I support both of the recommendations here. But it, again, the way I think about it is that housing is a, or the high cost is a symptom and not the cause of our problems. And the, in my own mind, the fundamental problem is the mismatch between housing and jobs, and that drives high prices for housing, and it drives long commutes. So, I, you know, rather than thinking about building housing everywhere, move the jobs, as an example. So, I think, I would just urge, as we go through this, that we don't just focus on one symptom, but that we actually think more holistically about the problem, and urge the people in the legislature to think, what's the problem, not what's the symptom? You know, what's the cause? And address the cause.
And just to add to that, I agree completely that you cannot just look at housing by itself. If you build houses here and keep jobs, and, you know, to support jobs that are in Silicon Valley, Cupertino, yes, I'm talking to you, then what you end up with is more people on the road for more hours. on the road for more hours contributing to lower quality of life for them, to lower quality of life for their communities, to poor air quality. And you're, it's not a good situation. So, as we go forward, and I'm speaking to all of you out there as well, whatever you can do to advocate for keeping jobs close to housing and jobs together, to reducing transportation time, and to working towards making these things, you know, fit together as opposed to calling one element out, the better it can be. And again, I do, I want to commend you for the job you've done.
Anything else? Do we have a motion then to support staff recommendations?
Go ahead.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Monroe, seconded by Councilmember Werner. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Measure passes. Thank you all very much.
And Vice Mayor Cronin, just to confirm, that was moving staff's recommendation to approve both resolutions.
Yes, both resolutions. Thank you. Good point.
That was the reason for the first and the second, right?
So, moving on to committee reports and matters initiated, we'll start with Councilmember Coumber.
Well, I had a PABCO meeting, that's a Paratransit Advisory Board in Oakland. We meet once every few months at the Transit Commission in that building, and always fun finding parking down there. But today wasn't nearly as bad for whatever reason. Only had to roll four blocks. But we went over the, the most, the most fun thing we covered today was the City of Hayward's Paratransit Program Report and what they're doing. And we find that as, again, as a board member of LAVTA too, I talk about paratransit services at their meetings as well. And it's become a bigger thing for most cities. More cities are getting involved in making sure that there are adequate paratransit facilities within them, and there are a lot of reasons that there aren't, you know, unreliable or hard to hire reliable help that will be able to do, to handle the people in big heavy wheelchairs and not come away with their own ills from pushing them around or moving them or whatever. So, it's good to hear when other cities chime in on this too. We're going to look next meeting for Newark to do the same. We also had a 2018 Comprehensive Investment Plan, which just outlined what monies were spent by the, we don't get to spend any at PABCO, we just comment on what the MTC is doing. And it kind of just detailed what went on there. And that was about it. It was not a long meeting. Got back here in time for this one.
Okay, thank you.
This is a matter initiated, is what I spoke to with the housing. I really want to look at including some kind of a, besides affordability and a certain X number of units for disabled access or accessible units. The elevators in the multi-story senior facilities are excellent, but I think when single-family homes are built in neighborhoods such as the Sonoma Project, and I asked them at the time too, what about, what if we could put one or two units in there for those who are in wheelchairs? Thanks.
And so, with the concurrence of the council, we can bring back a memo on our options of how we might require that? Is that something you want more information on?
Sure. All right. Anything else? Okay. Councilmember Monroe.
On March 13th, this is on, yes, on March 13th, I attended the Innovation Tri-Valley Game Changer Awards, hashtag game changer awards. And so, annually, each of the five Tri-Valley Cities highlights a few of their most game-changing businesses. There were a lot of interesting companies, Genomics to Accounting, which apparently can be game, actually, this was really a game-changing accounting firm. I was really proud of Livermore's company. That is, I'm going to mispronounce it because it looks like it should be very cool, but I think it's VeriCool.
It is.
VeriCool. It's a company that makes compostable packing containers that can replace styrofoam containers so that you end up not having styrofoam all over the place 500 years hence. So, that's good in and of itself. But the second piece of what VeriCool does is hires people, it gives people who have been in prison a second chance. About half of its workforce is composed of people who have been in prison and it gives them a second, it means that they get trained and can move on with their lives in ways that is really difficult to do. I'm really proud that Livermore is a city that supports this kind of work. As you've heard earlier, on the 14th, the City Council Subcommittee on Homelessness, which is the two of us, convened the first homelessness committee meeting, which really means that all of them did the heavy lifting, and thank you very much for all that you have done. And we're going to continue, and I think, well, you've heard a little bit about what took place there. I want to just mention that there will be a second meeting taking place towards the end of April, which will cover the situation with restrooms, with showers, storage, and trash moving forward. Look for new notifications in the paper, on social media, on the city website. This is a really difficult, difficult issue. Yes, it would be nice if we could make it happen quickly and easily. It's not going to be the, it's just not, I keep saying, things are just more complicated. They take longer and they cost more than they think you are, than you think. That's life. It's the way it's going to be. And I don't like it. Nobody has to like it, but it's the reality. On the 21st, with Councilmember Werner, I attended the Intergovernmental Meeting with LARPD and the School District, which we discussed, among other things, mutual efforts towards solving the vaping issues with nicotine-infused candy problems in Livermore as quickly as is feasible. And then, just this morning, actually, this afternoon, met with Supervisor Scott Haggerty and members of the Bay Area Air Quality Control Board, I'm not going to do that as letters, working with, and there is money set aside as part of an Assembly Bill 617 for air quality monitoring. And so, this is to encourage community groups to come forward, to work towards understanding what air quality in the area. It's a forum, it's using funds for environmental justice. Turns out, I know this will come as a surprise to all of you, Livermore and the Tri-Valley have bad air, some of the worst in the Bay Area. So, we qualify for this funding and looking for people who would like to be part of a community-driven group. I have some names in mind, but if you know anybody or if you're interested, see me. And can the city publicize this in various ways? Do you need to have something, do you need us to tell you to do that, or?
Yes, if you told us, we could put that information on our website.
Good.
Yes.
Yes.
Very good. This is relating AB 617 and BA QMD's program to attract community members. That's essentially the synopsis, and we can get more information on legislative.
Yeah, yeah, great, okay. And then, finally, I would like to respond to the comments from Mr. Branning on the events in New Zealand. I do not particularly want to say the city doesn't like what happened in New Zealand, but I do think that we can take, you know, a proactive approach in making our city an inclusive place. We are, I've lived here for a long time. It's felt really good to live here. But we know that this can happen anywhere. It's happened in enough places that building a sense of inclusion for everyone at every economic level, for everyone, for particularly vulnerable minorities, is something that would be, we should encourage before it's something that we have to respond to. And so, what I'd like to do is propose that, I guess, a Subcommittee of the Council work on a resolution. And it turns out that, I think, Rally for Love is having its third year. Maybe work with them, that would maybe be an appropriate forum to do some community development. How would we go about making that happen? Is that?
We were just coordinating on that.
So, with regard to the creation of a Subcommittee, first, that's the prerogative of the mayor, the mayor can do that. The rules of procedure do provide that the city council themselves, if there's a majority vote, can create a Subcommittee as well.
So, do we have to actually have the mayor, or do we have the mayor?
So, if the council, right now, the rules would speak that the Vice Mayor has all the rules of the mayor. However, this one was called out specifically that when the mayor creates a Subcommittee, the rest of the council have the equal authority to do that. So, my recommendation would be, if you want to pursue that today, if there's a motion or a direction by, I forget how to structure this. If there was a motion by a council member to form a Subcommittee to return to the council and give them direction, I think you could do that this evening.
I, sorry, I have no idea what you just said.
Do we need a, the question, I mean, I was going to ask a slightly different question responding to Mr. Branning's comment, and that was, what are the, what are the processes or what are our limitations, or how far can we go on supporting any sort of a resolution, if that's what you want to call it, that would support something? I mean, he specifically talked about condemning that kind of violence and supporting inclusion and so on and so forth. But my question is broader than that. If we wanted to say we like palm trees, how would we do that? I mean, is that something we can do?
The answer is yes. If you like palm trees, you can bring back a resolution to that effect.
But does it have to be done by us, or could it be done by somebody in city staff and brought to us for concurrence?
So, if you're desiring to use city staff, we need to have direction from you on what to prepare. However, the city council members themselves individually and collectively, as long as you don't reach a quorum, could prepare a resolution and bring back to the body to consider.
So, for example, two of you could decide to draft a draft resolution, and we could put a place on the agenda next time for the entire council to consider that.
One of us could do that, too.
One of us could do that.
So, I would ask Ms. Monroe to draft a resolution that we could, would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
Okay.
Very good. So, when that returns, when it's ready, we can place it back on a future agenda.
Perfect, okay. Great, thank you. You have anything else? Okay. Mr. Werner?
Yes.
So, I attended five different meetings in the past since the last council meeting. Valley Link Board, LDI Board Meeting, Altamont Open Space Committee Meeting, LAVTA Projects and Services Subcommittee, and an Intergovernmental Meeting. So, I'm not going to go through all of them, I'll just say a couple of highlights. The Valley Link, I'd say we're making progress on, the last meeting was on the build options of how you, who does what, how you finance it. And the next meeting will come back with more details on what the schedules would be, commensurate with the different options. But I think we're kind of lining up on something that makes sense. The Altamont Open Space Committee Meeting, one of the things got involved in a while ago was engaging a professor from Berkeley to help us rate the various open space characteristics so that we can, when some piece of land is presented to us, we can know how much we want it. So, there are a dozen different variables, and we have a program now where we can put the relative weights into a spreadsheet and then eventually get a map. And we're talking about making this more user-friendly, and ultimately, we, the vision would be, put this up online with some web-based tool, and anybody could go there and put the appropriate, their own feeling about the weights and see where the high priorities are. But the things vary from protecting endangered species to what's the view like from a particular place. So, we're making good progress on that, and I think it'll help us be more proactive in finding land. The LAVTA was pretty straightforward, as well as the LDI Board Meeting. On the Intergovernmental Meeting, what we spoke about was vaping, and we agreed collectively to have a joint resolution from the three organizations. And we'll try and get that in advance of the next Intergovernmental Meeting, which is in a couple of months, and that individually, the various governing bodies will approve this joint resolution and be drafted by the staff. And I think the goal here is to get something meaningful done on vaping before the beginning of the next school year. That would be the thing there. Then, let's see, so the other thing that we discussed at the Intergovernmental Meeting, which is some of the topics that Mr. Schmidt and Streeter, Bankhead, had talked about, was this building for the arts, because with the barn being repurposed, the question is, what can we do with the site here? And we've been talking for a couple of years with the arts groups about making this site available. And the question is, now, I think, is time that the new building is being just about ready. So, what I would like to do, a matter's initiated, is have the staff come back with the options for us to consider for what we do with this space, so that the various groups that are thinking about it can have, can get, we can get going on it. So, that's one thing. So, get it up head and eyes, just for staff to come back with, let's start the formal process for disposing of this site or envisioning it for the next. Then, the second part of that.
So, was that concurrence?
Yeah.
Very.
Didn't you feel all the heads bobbling here? So, the other thing I would like is permission from the council to work with LARPD officially, because I think there's an opportunity here to collaborate with that organization with respect to this site if it's available for the arts group. So, I just want to be able to go and talk to the various subcommittees or whatever they have and help the arts group make the pitch, so I can get that.
Sure, that's something you want to do? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I got, okay.
Sure.
All right. You just have to nod your head.
Okay.
So, then, the last piece that I'd like to do is that, and it was brought up about the parking garages downtown, and I think there was a little lack of clarity when it was written up the last time in the local papers to what we're doing. And I'd like to get that clarified. A few people have come up to me and said, oh, I see you're giving up on the L Street Garage. And that's not exactly what's the situation. So, if you could, I'd like staff to clarify what we are doing now, but in addition is to come back with maybe some thoughts on what our communications plan can be, because various people are saying things about what we're doing downtown, and there's driving confusion, and I think we need to be more clear, possibly. So, if you could come back with, well, this is how we're going to do our communications to the city, I mean, the community, that would be great.
So, to answer your very specific question about parking, you have in your master plan approved two parking sites. One is adjacent to your existing garage, and we refer to that as the I Street Garage. And that ultimately will be moving forward first. We expect to be under construction in 2020 for the I Street Garage. L Street, you've previously entitled that particular project, and that project will follow the I Street Garage, and that will begin construction in 2022. And the timing of that can be flexible based on the economy and other things, but that's our current planning at this particular point. So, the first of the garages starting in 2020 and the second in 2022. And we can certainly bring back some more information for you and get some direction on our continued outreach as we move through the various projects. As you know, Veterans Way is under construction, will be completed this summer. That's very exciting. We'll be recontouring the temporary parking to match around that street. The Jiffy Loo Building will be demolished essentially later this year, and the area there will be available for temporary parking. So, in each of these cases, we'll be carrying out what the council's direction was, was to maintain our, an adequate parking sup- was to maintain our, an adequate parking supply during construction as we move through and build each of the portions of your overall master plan.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? No. Okay, so, um, one thing that Mr. Werner didn't mention was that the group from Japan, our sister city students were here, Lisco, Livermore, Yozokido, Sister City Organization. The students and chaperones arrived on the 13th of March. I went to that dinner to welcome that group. And then, Mr. Werner and I were there for the closeout dinner on the 19th. Also, very nice opportunity to interact with folks from our sister city in Japan. And this is something that the students from Livermore go out in the fall, and I think Mr. Werner went one year recently. Year ago last, yeah, 17? 2017. And then, um, then the Japanese folks from Yozokido come here in the spring. And so, they, they returned home on the, on the 20th of March. And it was a successful week, as far as I know. Had a meeting with Stop Waste on the 14th, and then with the mayor gone, I had the pleasure of being interviewed by TV 30 for the mayor's report on the 21st of this month. Uh, Mr., I don't have any particular matters initiated of. I did want to respond to Mr. Scott's question about CityServe and their contract. That's, that's a contract that they bid on independently. I don't know that we have any particular information. I mean, we may know how much money they got, but I don't know that that's in our purview, is it?
It actually is in your purview.
It is.
And that actually hasn't happened yet.
Oh, it hasn't.
So, while there is discussion of how to actually spend your heap funds, which are coming from the county, that will be in front of you in May, and at that point, you will make a decision.
And that would include money for City Serve?
It could, yes.
It could?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity then. And just because, I guess the other point I wanted to make is just, and as I understand it, in Union City, they don't, and their parking lots, I don't know how big they are, I just know the names of them and so on. But I understood from the person that represented Union City at our meeting in March that they didn't have room for RVs and motorhomes. And I would hope that we would consider that, per Mr. Scott's point, as we think about that in the future for Livermore. Because I think we do have a different, uh, set of clients that we want to serve than maybe they do in Union City. So, I think that's an important point that he brought up, and I certainly would be interested in knowing how we can accommodate that. I thought Ms. Thompson's point about, I hadn't thought about it, refugees and victims of natural disasters and then ten cities popping up, that's an interesting point. And I think we need to think about that as a, as my colleague to my left and I consider this as we move forward regarding the homeless situation, also the notion about a day center. So, I, I think that's also an interesting thing that we ought to think about. So, I don't have anything that I'm going to ask the staff to do, but I do think that we, I think these are interesting points that are continuing to be brought up by the people that are facing the, the challenges of everyday life. And I, I think those are important, that they're brought to our attention, whether they're here or during the, the committee meetings that we're having. As Councilmember Monroe mentioned, will be sometime later in April. So, I appreciate you folks bringing those to our attention now. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting till April 8th, 2019. Meetings adjourned.